Good evening. My name is Lindsay Heffernan and I am the Chairperson of the Shrewsbury School Committee, and on behalf of my colleagues on the school committee and our central office staff, I'd like to welcome you to the School Committee Meeting of April 26, 2023. I'd like to, as always, thank Liz Populowski and the members of the Shrewsbury Media Connection for recording and live broadcasting this event. It will be rebroadcast on Channel 29 between now and our next scheduled meeting, and also available on the SMC YouTube channel. The first item on our agenda is public participation. Tonight, nobody has expressed interest in addressing the committee. However, in the future, if anyone wishes to participate in this portion of the meeting, they should contact the Chairperson prior to the beginning of the meeting. Once recognized, you may have up to three minutes to present their material, and the committee, of course, will also review and consider written comments which may be presented to us before or after our meetings. Next up is Chairperson and Members' Reports. Do we have anything this evening? All right, then we'll move right on. Dr. Sawyer, Superintendent's Report is next on our agenda.
Thank you. I'd like to share some terrific news. Thanks to our partners at the Shrewsbury Education Foundation, I was able to, or I'm pleased to announce the winners of this year's John P. Collins Awards for Excellence, as well as reference those who were selected to receive grants for innovative projects from the Shrewsbury Education Foundation. I had the good fortune yesterday to go around the district with Kimberly Olson, the President of the SEF, to surprise the awardees, and also to thank the folks who earned the grant funds. So without further ado, I'd just like to publicly announce the professional educators who are receiving this award include the Shrewsbury High School English Language Education Team. Those are the three teachers who work incredibly closely together to serve those students and their families, Allison Berkley, Rosie Cataldo, and Melissa Nattenville. Also, from Shrewsbury High School, a family and consumer science teacher, Shirley Lemay, are a teacher in our Instructional Technology and Media and Business Department, Jason Andriola, and a special education teacher from Oak Middle School, Talene Orlando. So those are the four, or seven, rather, recipients in the category, or six, I'm not counting correctly, six recipients in the category of professional educators. We had three recipients in the paraprofessional category. They were Dan Waite, a paraprofessional at Oak Middle School, Ravi Firk Baruk, an ABA technician at Parker Road Preschool, and Blake Jarvey, who is an aide at Coolidge Elementary School. For support staff, we were able to present an award to Brian Sheeler. Brian is the IT Support Specialist at Beale School, and we do have one of our bus drivers who will receive an award. Timing did not allow us to give that, so that's going to remain a mystery until we have a chance to present that in person, and then I will make sure to note that at a future meeting. And then there were two more awards given. One is for leadership. That was presented to Pam Poitras. She is our Science Coordinator for Grades 5 through 8, but has also been serving as the Interim Assistant Principal at Oak Middle School. And then there is one in the category of unsung heroes, and that was presented to Donna Morgan, who is the Media Aid at Spring Street School, who also has been covering as the Office Secretary due to an absence, and she was presented again with the Unsung Hero Award. And really appreciate all the nominations. The SEF shared the nominations with me. They're very heartfelt, and all who are nominated will receive a copy of their nomination, as well as our recipients this year of the John P. Collins Awards for Excellence. So congratulations to all of those outstanding staff members. Just want to mention the names of the staff members who also took the extra time and effort to apply for an SEF grant, in no particular order, from Sherwood Middle School, Linda Burrard and Erin Kennedy for a grant for the Sherwood Middle School Unified Social Club, Sarah Williams, an art teacher at Shrewsbury High School, for a grant for a project involving sculpture and photography, Hillary Clegg, media specialist at Sherwood Middle School, for a circuit-cutting machine for their Makerspace, Sophie Strabel, who is our, teaching our Design Lab class at Sherwood Middle School for materials for that program, Robert Perry Cruz, who is one of our clinical coordinators for some money to fund training for our Applied Behavior Analysis Technicians and, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, our board-certified behavior analysts at our school to provide different training relative to trauma-informed assessment, Gillian Falvo, who's a music teacher at Coolidge School for a variety of instruments to better outfit the music classroom there, Heather Lezier, who is a French teacher at Shrewsbury High School for some real-time interpersonal communication they can use to speak to people interactively, the educators from Patton School, Johanna Evans, the art teacher, Joan Carlson, a classroom teacher, Ashley Gallagher, our curriculum specialist, instructional coach, and Dr. Scott Mulcahy, the principal, to revitalize the Patton School Garden and outdoor space, Emily Bredeberg, the Shrewsbury High School Media Specialist, and Maria Clara Macedo Wood, who is the Media Aid at the high school for a new LED display at the media center there. Also, Erin Bertnik, a health teacher at Shrewsbury High, and Patrick Collins, a physics teacher at Shrewsbury High School, for a joint project where the physics class will be building a bike that will power a blender, which will make nutritious smoothies, the health class is working on. And then finally, last but not least, Sarah Matthews, who's our instructional coach, curriculum specialist at Floral Street School, for the purchase of Cublets, which are magnetic block, blocks that can be used in a robot design cycle, which I'm looking forward to seeing what those are like for students. Many of these have already been purchased, thanks to the generosity of the SEF, and are already being put into practice. I know there soon will be. And again, I'm very grateful to the Shrewsbury Education Foundation for their continuous support of providing seed money for really innovative educational projects and approaches in our schools. So congratulations to all the grant recipients. Thank you to the SEF, and thank you, and congratulations to the John P. Collins Awards for Excellence winners for this year. And that is Superintendent's Report this evening.
I do have to note, for the record, that Amy Clotter was both silently but visibly cheering for our staff, who are really incredible staff, who are responsible for really ensuring that we fulfill our mission here. And of course, on behalf of all of us, a huge thanks to SEF for their ongoing support to the district. Our first-time scheduled appointment is a School Committee Member recognition. As a little background here, Mr. Jason Palich is our Vice Chairperson, has served on the committee from 2012 to 2015, and then again from 2017 to this evening, to 2023. So this is Mr. Palich's last regular meeting before stepping down, and we want an opportunity to acknowledge and recognize him.
Specified regular meeting. Are you planning on a special?
We have extra in store for you, Jason, many, many executive sessions. And to start us off this evening, I would love to, love to welcome up Ms. Beth Cassavan and John Samia, who are members of our Select Board Vice Chair and a member, and have been working with Mr. Palich over many, in many different capacities over the years. So, thank you.
Thank you. Make yourselves comfortable here.
Yes.
Settle in for a long roast of Jason. John and I are here on behalf of our Select Board members to thank you, Jason, for all that you have done over your many years of dedicated service to the community, especially the students, the families, and the staff of Shrewsbury Public Schools. You've led us through some very challenging times, both financial challenges and the challenges related to a global pandemic. You've taken a lot of hard votes, always with the best interests of the Shrewsbury School Committee front of mind. For families new to the community who may be watching tonight, Jason is a very big part of the reason why there is tuition-free universal kindergarten for all. He not only championed that initiative, but he led the campaign effort to build the new Beale Elementary School to make space for a program that was long overdue in Shrewsbury. Jason leads with confidence and with compassion. He's an active listener, an effective communicator, and a fierce advocate for our public schools. As a parent, I personally benefited from Jason's work as a School Committee Member, and my children's success is due in part to the hundreds of small decisions that Jason has made over time that has shaped our school system into the one that everyone in Shrewsbury can be proud of. I will miss tuning into School Committee Meetings and hearing your perspectives, and I'm grateful for the time that you've dedicated to your work, knowing all too well that what we see in your televised public meetings is only the tip of the iceberg of the time that you have spent in service to our community. So congratulations and thank you.
You're not going to know what to do to watch School Committee Meetings without Jason.
I know.
So, congratulations for nine wonderful years of service. I've had the opportunity to serve both as a colleague and across the aisle. And when you started in 2012, you offered a great perspective that we didn't have then on the committee, someone who had recently graduated, who came back to give back to the community, and provided insight that we didn't have at the time. You came at a time when we were consistently dealing with structural deficits, recognized the challenge, played a huge role in a couple of operational overrides to provide stability to our district. The conversations, I know before you came along, it was having a big gap and then trying to figure out how we could get as far, close to where we needed to be in that year, and doing as little damage as possible to the district. Since 2014, we haven't had those conversations, and started to get into those challenges in 2021 again, and then through collaborative effort, which you played a large role in. We passed an override together as two boards to provide stability for many years in town, and continue that dialogue today to ensure the best for our students. You've always brought your A-game. Truly appreciate that. Take some well-deserved time off after this. The community thanks you, but hope to see you again in involvement soon. So thank you and best wishes for everything that you've done.
Thank you. Thank you both for being here this evening. I want to turn it over to my colleagues. I know the staff have some things to say as well, but please, let's be sure.
It's been a pleasure to serve with Jason as a colleague on the school committee over the past year, and I've also had the pleasure of working with Jason on two override campaigns and the Campaign for the Dead Exclusion for the Beale School. Jason has made a significant contribution to our school district. He's been a strong and skillful advocate for school funding. He's been instrumental in initiatives to help solve the structural deficit, as mentioned, and a strong advocate for diversity, equity, belonging, and inclusion. He's also been front and center and working on, working to alleviate the space issues faced by the district at our elementary school level, and championing the opening of the new Beale School, as well as advocating for free full-day kindergarten for all students. These are all things that have immeasurably helped our school district. Our schools and students have benefited from your service, and thank you for your service to the Shrewsbury Public Schools. We'll miss you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please.
Jason, we've worked together your whole time. I know it's just been the highlight of your career. And I think the first time I remember meeting you was in '07, and we were, it was one of the override campaigns, and you were the student that was helping us with some poll watching, but I think that you were the person who also got all the students to help us poll watch. So that was my first introduction to Jason. It was his kid, and he was really passionate about, you know, making sure things got passed in town. So thank you, because I think you took that with you all the way to today. And one of the things that sticks out for me is your campaign strategy. Like, when you put your mind to something, it gets done, and I'm internally grateful for all of the work you've done on the override, passing the Beale School, and all of the other things that we've had to deal with as a school committee. And like I said to you before, I'm old enough to be your mother. So it's one of these things where you and I, we would sometimes be on the same side of an issue, or sometimes on the other side of an issue, but we, we always moved beyond it, and we've always stayed friends. So thank you for everything you've done. You've left a, a big road for us to follow, and I think we're going to see more of you somewhere else down the road in some other capacity that has a political thing. So, good for you, but thank you for everything you've done.
Yeah, so I met Jason in 2014, 2015, when you had stepped down from School Committee the first time. This is the reason why I'm, I'm sitting here, you know, is my introduction to politics.
You're my first successor.
That's correct. I'm still here eight years later. So, but when I heard that you were interested in running again in, in 2017, I was really excited about, you know, serving with you as, as a colleague. And I've learned quite a great deal about the campaigning and just your, how passionate you are about this town and education, and just the way you socialize key issues on schools and just within our town. It's just, it's outstanding. You're able to just get the message out there, and I just really appreciate everything you've done as both a School Committee Member and as a resident. You know, it's, it's been a pleasure working with you over the last six years. I would say, from, you know, the Beale School, the new Beale School, to navigating public education through COVID, to the operational override in 2021, you were a key part of the success of, of all of that. So I wish you well. I hope our ratings don't take too much of a hit. We've had quite a base of viewers, so, but, no, but I wish you all the best, and thank you for your service to this body. Appreciate it.
And Dr. Sawyer, please.
Thank you. Earlier tonight, when I got out a little bit later than I like, just the reminder that we had this meeting this evening. In addition to a link to the terrific Community Advocate article about Mr. Palich and his service over his time on, on the School Committee, I tried to connect to our professional basketball team. I know Jason's a big Boston sports fan, but there was a quote by Red Auerbach having to do with, with pride that says, "Take pride in what you do. The kind of pride I'm talking about is not the arrogant, puffed-up kind. It's just the whole idea of caring, fiercely caring." When I think about Jason, I think about his, his fierce caring for our town, our community, and certainly the well-being of our, our students and staff and in our school communities. I think that his pride of being an alum of Shrewsbury High School comes through. He's been an outstanding advocate of all of you, referred to, building support among our community to provide the resources that we need for our students and our schools and our staff, not only the buildings, but also the budget stability that results in improvements for, for kids like universal full-day kindergarten is certainly one of his great achievements as part of this committee over the last many years. I think everyone knows how eloquent Jason is in, in making the arguments about why what we're doing is important, or making the case for what he believes is the right pathway forward. And in my many conversations with him over the years, I've never doubted ever that what he was interested in was doing what was best for our schools and our students and, and our, and our staff. As a result of his work, you know, our, our schools are better than when he started on the committee, our, our community's better, our town's children are better off, and that's a great accomplishment. So I certainly want to thank you for your leadership and for your service, and I, I'm certainly reminded, being an alum of Shrewsbury High School and a proud one, I, I think you're exemplifying what, what is said in the mission statement of Shrewsbury High School, which is to empower students to become capable, caring, and active contributors to the world in which they live. And I think that it's certainly well-known that, Jason, that you are highly capable, deeply caring, and you have been actively contributing in so many positive ways to our school district and our town. So thank you and congratulations, and I hope to see you in different ways and in different, but your service has been outstanding, and I'm very grateful for it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Jason, I realize that I have, I've known you now for almost a decade, and after I moved to Shrewsbury, you were the one who got me engaged in local politics. I think starting with, starting with some library work and moving on to some overrides. I remember hosting a budget and beers session in my house, and I was pretty new to town, and had some people I didn't know there to learn about, and you were helping to translate school budgets into something that people could understand. And, and now, think back, I was like, maybe it was all of those hours of speech and debate that you're very proud of in the Shrewsbury High School, helping you figure out how to, how to translate the complex into something, something simple. And your countless hours of service over nine years, I think of the many quick, but many phone calls. What are we doing? What's happening? And, you know, I, I lean on you for advice and have from the moment I joined, joined this, this committee, where, where I go with questions, recommendations for action forward. It's been very beneficial to me, and I know to other members of, of this committee. It has been said, but it has to be said again, the political acumen and strategy you have brought to the town of Shrewsbury. I will particularly note, as has been said, the 2021 override campaign, the hours of time I spent with you on that campaign, and navigating and strategizing, and ultimately leaning to something very important for our community, for both our municipal and our, and our school budgets. It's, it's, it's going to have, it has fingerprints, and will continue to have fingerprints in so many, so many ways. So, you know, we, I am appreciative, but I know on behalf of all of us, we are so appreciative for how dedicated you are to Shrewsbury, how dedicated you are to local government, and the importance of local government and service, and most importantly, how dedicated you are to the children here. And given the insane number of hours you have spent in this building, we have a little something for you. So, this is on behalf of a School Committee colleague. You can open it.
Okay.
I, I, go for it.
Do, do the card?
Eh, you can skip the card. You can give the card later. It says nice things.
There we go. Look at that. It is a map of Precinct 6.
It's a tri-verse home, and it says, "With appreciation," and it has mapped on it the town, this, this building, where you have spent many, many hours in dedication and service. And so, on behalf of all of us, we are most appreciative. And now you can remember that when you're at home and you're not here. We're still here.
I'm just really astounded. They're precinct lines, the voting precincts, actually, on this map. I don't know where you found this, but it's fantastic. Thank you, everybody.
It wasn't here.
So the Central Office Leadership Team also has a token of our appreciation, Jason, that Amy is going to bring up.
Wow.
And Amy, Amy did some research on your, your Twitter feed.
Oh.
Oh, look at that. Thank you. Wow.
And so knowing that you like to do some cooking, and some variety of things that will help you, so you'll be cooking dinner at home on Wednesday while we're here, I expect. So we'll look forward to some of those.
Thank you, everybody. This is great. I'll have to go to the grocery store later.
Please. Anything you'd like to, like to say?
No, I'm good.
No? Okay. I don't believe you.
I just have many thanks to offer. My journey with Shrewsbury Public Schools started in the fall of 1994 as a kindergartner. I think that was the sixth year with the old Beale being open as an emergency temporary measure. I graduated in 2007. I got elected to this committee when I was 22. About two-thirds of my life have been spent either as a student of this district or as a member of its governing body. So tonight is bittersweet, but it is time to create room for new voices. So the, the moment has come, and I'm, I am sorry to move on, but I'm glad that it's, it's here. I'm proud of what we've achieved during my disjointed three terms, disconnected, I should say. You know, I think my first vote was the one-to-one technology devices for our students. I'm proud of the innovations this district has done in special education, keeping more kids receiving their education here in district. We constructed a new K-4 elementary school to address space needs. We earned the support of Shrewsbury residents for two badly needed operational overrides. We made significant investments in student mental health services, finally achieving tuition-free full-day kindergarten for everybody. Very excited about that. As I noted when I announced that I wasn't going to be speaking another term, all is not well. We have challenges, just like every school district does. You know, we have ongoing inequities in student performance. We need to continue to strive to have our hires better reflect the community we serve. We have to continue to make sure we're addressing the lingering impacts of the pandemic on student learning, but I have every confidence that this district is going to meet those challenges, just as it has met challenges before. I have faith in the future of Shrewsbury Public Schools. To my colleagues, I have had the honor to serve with seven individuals in this role, although only Mrs. Fritz is the one who's served for the duration of, of that time. It has been an honor to serve with each of you. I was mentioning to Mrs. Fritz before the meeting started tonight, this is not the first time I've left the School Committee. I stepped off in 2015. I came back. I'm not coming back again, sorry. I was, I was looking through the remarks that I made to my colleagues when I left in 2015, and I, I picked out something. It was a little strident, but I, I felt it, it bears some repeating, and so it's going to, it's going to get reissued tonight. I caution my colleagues to remain vigilant and to be fighters for this district. Do not let us take the first steps down the long road to crisis. The path that brought us to crisis, and this was a reference to the 2014, the need for an operational override back then, the path to that crisis was 10 years long. It didn't happen overnight. It didn't happen quickly. It came gradually at first, until we were on the precipice of disaster. Speak up. Don't let us head down that path again. Never go quietly into the sunset for the sake of harmony. Do not enable the investment that the community has made in our schools to be squandered. You're all here to be, and whoever is elected to succeed me, you're all elected to be the chief advocates for this district. Most of the time, that means collaboration, so collaborate. Sometimes, that means fight, and when those times come, fight. To the staff of Shrewsbury Public Schools at every level, I, I have no end of thanks that I want to give to you. That starts with Dr. Sawyer, whose career has arced nicely from being my third-grade assistant principal down to being my subordinate. Just keeping everybody humble. We'll talk, we'll talk more about his performance later tonight, but, but the tone for leadership is, is set at the top. Our, our district enjoys the, the stability. It does, in part, because you look at districts that are revolving doors of superintendents. We're on our third since 1977, and that's because we've been blessed with leaders from Dr. Collins to Dr. Bent to Dr. Sawyer, who understand this community, who give everything they have to making sure that Shrewsbury Public Schools succeed, and that tone comes from the top on down. So thank you to Dr. Sawyer for his leadership. We are all blessed to be supported by district staff, Amy Barr, Pat, Meg, everyone else who has, who has been in those roles, who spend countless hours preparing us, answering our questions, generating, generating reports. You make us better members. We couldn't do what we do without what you do, and I know that you don't all get to work with students on a day-to-day basis, and I hope you never forget how many kids are benefiting from all the work that you do. I want to give a special shout-out to Beth McCollum and her predecessor, Kim Canton, who provide administrative support in the Superintendent's Office, who are also administrative support to the School Committee. They make the trains run on time, and they do so many wonderful things that, that don't get noticed but really should. And I keep coming back to the comment that I found myself making most often during my service on the School Committee, and that is the reason that Shrewsbury Public Schools performs so well. Why do our schools perform so well? It's because of the staff. It's not buildings. It's not textbooks or apps. It's not devices. It's not things. It's not money. It's people. As a district being compared to other districts, we will never have the most money. We will never have the newest or the nicest things. What we have are extremely talented people who want to work here. Shrewsbury Public Schools performs as well as it does because of the teachers, the paraprofessionals, aides, nurses, counselors, media specialists, food services workers, custodians, and administrative support staff. Thousands of Shrewsbury graduates make their way in the world, thanks to the hard work that those folks do every day, and I am blessed to be one of them. And finally, to the Shrewsbury community, I want to thank you for trusting me in this role three times. It is an honor to be given responsibility for the thing that so many of our residents cherish most about our community. I want to thank the volunteers, whether you are a PTO leader, volunteered on one of the dead exclusion or override campaigns, the volunteers who just cared and stepped up, and so many of them are in this room tonight. I, I remember every single one of you, and if I was ever aware of, of something you did for Shrewsbury Public Schools, I promise I still remember it today, and, and it, it means the world to me, and it's meant the world to so many others. And I want to thank the community at large for supporting our schools at critical moments in 2014, 2018, and 2021. These were difficult choices. Nobody likes to raise their own taxes. They were also foundational choices that determined whether Shrewsbury was going to continue to be a place with top-notch public schools. Members of our Shrewsbury community decided that Shrewsbury's kids are worth it, and that educational excellence is fundamental to our identity in the town of Shrewsbury. We will have to make that choice again. In life, there are no final victories. I look forward to being part of those conversations with you all. No matter what I do with the rest of my life and time, I know that one of the things that I'm always going to be most proud of is to have been a member of the Shrewsbury School Committee, and I will continue to fight for this district. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Jason. I now have some regular business to attend to. We're going to keep you busy for at least, at least another 60 to 80 minutes, but, and you can open your cards silently.
I'm going to be busy with business.
All right. Our next time-scheduled item tonight is our 2023 to 2027 Strategic Plan. The Shrewsbury Public Schools has partnered with a consulting firm, Focus Schools, to facilitate the process of creating an updated strategic plan for the district for the next five years. At the meeting on March 29, representatives from Focus Schools provided an update to the work done in the district and shared a draft proposal for, a draft-proposed strategic plan, which was posted for public viewing. And at our April 12 meeting, we also held a public hearing to gather any feedback. And then finally, there was also an online thought exchange offered for stakeholders to provide feedback as, as well. Dr. Dr. Sawyer, I'm gonna turn it over to you for any recommendations and comments that you might have before we move for a vote.
Thank you. We were pleased to collaborate, as you mentioned, with Focus Schools, who assisted us with this process. It was, I thought it was a very thorough process that did engage hundreds of our stakeholders in different ways, some of which you mentioned, Ms. Heffernan, but, you know, between the community forum, the multiple online exchanges, 22 separate focus groups, including students and parents and caregivers and staff, interactions with the school committee, the leadership teams, data analysis about our performance in different ways, both academically, socially, and emotionally. I think it was a very thorough look at where we are as a school district. The draft that was presented on March 29th, we did ask for feedback through a, a final thought exchange. We'll post that information on our website tomorrow, again, out of transparency, as we always do. We had a public hearing. There was limited response to that, and there wasn't a lot of response to the thought exchange, frankly, and I, I don't know whether or not that's survey fatigue or whether or not the fact that there was a great deal of, of response to asking us or telling us what was important to them. And I hope that overall, people see that reflected in the plan. Some of those comments, some of the feedback has been supportive of the three commitments that are made in the strategic plan to educational excellence, to the enhanced well-being of all, and to the optimization of resources. Some of the feedback felt that some of these were overly broad, although I would respectfully ask people to consider that, you know, simplicity at the overarching level shouldn't be confused with the fact that the work itself underneath that is very complex. I believe that those three commitments are very important legs of a stool that are necessary to make all our schools the best that they can be. I also firmly believe that educational excellence and the well-being of our students and staff can and should be mutually reinforcing, not mutually exclusive, and I think that this plan references that, that it's not one or the other, it's both. I think this plan will compel us to focus our efforts in ways that will be based on the assessment of our students' academic needs, our assessments of our students' mental and social and emotional and behavioral needs, along with our staff's needs for their own well-being, and our assessment of what resources are necessary to then meet those needs. I appreciate that a focus on diversity and belonging and inclusion and equity are built into all of these commitments and strategic priorities, and they're not a separate box to check off to the side, and so, I believe that was, that's a strength of this plan. I think it addresses key areas of need, such as the focus on literacy, instructional practices, as well as providing more, excuse me, more career and technical educational opportunities for all of our high school students, but especially those 25 to 35 students who would have had access to vocational technical high school before the admissions policies had asked to be changed, starting with this year's ninth-grade class. Some of the comments in response to the draft were that there were too many strategic priorities associated with those three commitments, whereas some felt it needed more detail. And so, we're always in a public area, going to find that there are people on, on either side of that spectrum. There were some who felt that their particular issue that they expressed perhaps in a focus group or through an online exchange was not included. I think in some cases, those issues raised could be specific concerns that might be more limited in scope, yet still may be addressed by the district in different ways, but not part of the strategic plan. In other ways, they could be included in some of the action steps that we developed in the next phase of the process, which I'll speak to in a moment. But I do want to emphasize that all of the feedback that we received has been reviewed, and all of it is valuable. If the committee is to approve the plan tonight, this remainder of the spring, the summer, and in the early fall, we'll be developing further discrete action steps and measures of impact. The intent, of course, as was discussed when it was presented, is to develop these each year so that we can be more responsive to evolving conditions rather than try to predict what we're going to need three or four years from now on a year-by-year basis, update what those action steps are going to be, and, and report out on whether or not we're meeting our, our goals, while at the same time maintaining these three overarching commitments and these strategic priorities over the five-year span of the plan. As with any district-wide endeavor, some feedback conveyed criticism or disagreement, and of course, that's also valuable feedback. You want to emphasize, we are far from perfect as a school district, and we have many ways in which we can improve, and I think it's important that we continue to be humble and open to constructive criticism in areas that are important to those who are sharing their perspective, while also recognizing, of course, that trying to do too many things at once would not be a wise approach at all. And there's a variety of things that many different people across the span of a district our size would like to see us work on and focus on. Ultimately, I believe that this strategic plan lays out key areas for improvement, important strategic priorities, and provides a framework for a flexible year-to-year approach that will focus our resources, our attention, and our energy to make our schools better than they are today. I think it's very important to note that we're starting from a position of strength, but a hallmark of why our schools are strong is that we always are seeking to improve them. So, based on the feedback that we received, based on the very significant process that we've gone through since the late summer, early fall, I believe that the plan is worthy of approval, and ask that the school committee vote to do so, and then we will start to move into the next phase of specific action steps and, and over the coming months. And I'm looking forward to some excellent work being accomplished, both in the short-term and the longer five-year timeframe that this plan would come. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and again, recommend that the school committee vote to adopt this new strategic plan this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. Any discussion? Ms. Fritz, please.
I think one of the first things that I'm happy that we did is hiring Focus Schools. The first time we did strategic goals and priorities, we did it ourselves, and it was a lot of work and a lot of time, and I think this was a much more streamlined process that was allowed district leadership to be involved, but not in that nitty-gritty level. And it was done quickly, but it was also collaboratively. And there's a lot of, it was inclusion of all groups and voices, which is great. I think it gives us that flexible roadmap going forward, not reinventing the wheel, but we're, we're tweaking things that need to be tweaked, we're adding things that need to be added, and I agree with Dr. Sawyer, there's always a, somebody's opinion may be the opposite of what should be in here or not, but that's why it's flexible, and it's, we can move and pivot as we need to. And I think it bears repeating that the school committee, one of the things that we wanted embedded and not separate was that DEI, DEIB, I always make sure I get the B in there, so that diversity and belonging is all embedded within and not a separate standalone, because it should be embedded in everything we do, and it should be part of everything we do, and not like a check-off side box. So, I'm fully in support of this. This is a great process, and thank you to Dr. Sawyer for leading it.
Thank you. Please, Mr. Pudge.
I want to echo Mrs. Fritz's comments. I think that this is a wonderful plan for the district going forward, and though we, obviously, I think that our previous strategic plan laid out some really important goals that had a lot of community buy-in, I think that this document is certainly more accessible and a little bit more compact. And I do want to just encourage members of the community, not just those who consider themselves stakeholders in Shrewsbury Public Schools, but members of the broader community as well, to engage with this document, to have a sense of what our goals are for our students, where we're going. I think it's a really well-put-together document that I think really communicates really succinctly a very complex mission, but, but will help the community understand what it is we try to do here in Shrewsbury Public Schools.
Thank you very much.
I also fully support implementing this plan. I believe that the process was thorough and collaborative to establish the plan. I'm happy that we've also been able to allocate some resources towards implementation in the fiscal year '24 budget, and to allocate some money towards having some monitoring of the plan going forward as well. And I do like, as my colleagues have mentioned, that the plan lays out these expressed proposed action steps that we can continue to update and continue to take a look at and make sure that we're in line with current best practices and things that are really, you know, front and center for the school district. So, again, I, I fully support implementing the plan.
Thank you.
Yeah, I support the plan as well. I, I appreciate the data-driven approach that we took to arriving at this plan. I also appreciate the engagement that occurred with the community and the time that the staff put into this as well, in addition to their day jobs. This took a lot of time and effort, and I really appreciate the feedback that they provided, and I do feel also having that third-party validation through Focus Schools and helping us, you know, kind of navigate, you know, to this point was, was extremely important to the process.
Yeah, thank you. I think I also am quite pleased with where, where we landed. I think I said earlier on, if everything is a priority, then nothing is a priority, and this has been an important process for us to decide what's most important. I like the clarity of the three commitments to cover all of our work. I also am really supportive of having DEIB embedded throughout our work, is really part, fundamentally baked into all of our values. I'm eager to get to the setting of, of measures of impact, but I think that's a really critical point, so that we know what's most important to pay attention to. And I'm certainly quite pleased with the focus both on literacy and, as you noted, Dr. Sawyer, our career in technical education, matters of great importance really across the age span. So, I, I look forward to getting to those early actions and, and looking at best practices to help our educators determine, and sometimes to know what to put down, because sometimes there's a feeling that there's a lot that we ask of our, of our staff, as incredible as, as Mr. Pudge noted just, just a little bit ago. We ask a lot of them, and so, if there's anything we can be doing to help clarify that, I think that's really important, and I know this is the work to come, but we have 6,000 students who need to know that we're also always interested in continuous improvement, and I think this is setting a really important path forward. So, thank you to all of the staff, Dr. Sawyer, and I want to particularly thank Ms. Clouter for all of the work to get us to the, and many others, but particularly for spearheading this, this effort. I think, I think we're at a really, a good place, and I'm, I'm excited for the next steps. With that, then, I, if there's no other comments, would be entertain a motion that the committee vote to approve the 2023 to 2027 strategic plan as presented in your materials.
So moved.
Second. Excellent. All those in favor can do so with an eye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion passes unanimously. We hand it to you. Thank you. All right. Our next item is under our policy, and that is our homework policy revision. This would be for our second reading and a vote. As background, our, we had our first reading of our updated homework policy, that is policy number 523, was presented for the school committee on April 12th, 2023. That draft was posted for public viewing, and we, and any feedback in advance of a vote this evening, I will note that we did not receive any comments to our, to our email on this matter. Dr. Sawyer, do we have anything more to say for the, for the members here?
I also did not receive any email correspondence about the proposed piece. I, I do want to thank Ms. Clouter for shepherding this process, both pre and post-pandemic, and I appreciate your recognizing her for being the key liaison with Focus Schools on the, on the strategic plan as well. Ms. Clouter, as well as other leaders across the district, and particularly at the high school level, where she worked with various members of the high school leadership team on, because this is the first time that the policy will be including our high school grades as well as our elementary grades. I think although the policy is longer than typical policy, the, the detail is important, and I think a lot of the detail that was added, answered questions or clarified issues that were raised, either in the original exchange that was done with parents and students or those subsequently done with staff, and I will, it is my hope that also some of the, the piloting, so to speak, of some of the aspects of it that we've been doing over the past year-plus, make it that a lot of this is not necessarily going to be a change in practice, but really it's a firming practice that, that has been put in place. But we will be working to communicate it effectively and thoroughly as we go forward into the next school year, and I, I wholeheartedly support it and recommend that the school committee vote to approve it this evening.
Excellent. Our colleagues, any further comment on this matter?
No.
I do just want to thank both Ms. Boucher and Mr. Pudge as our policy subcommittee for your work to help to get us to, to the point, Dr. Sawyer, that this is in many ways refinement of our, of our practice, but it's, but it's important as we nestle in looking at mental health and start time, all the other pieces, that there's a lot, a lot of commitments on our, on our students and our staff here. So, with that, then, I would be looking for a motion that the committee vote to approve the revised policy, 523, our homework policy as presented.
So moved.
Second. Thank you. All those in favor can do so with an eye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Moving next to matters of finance and operations, this is a proposed approach for elementary capital planning. So, earlier this year, after the school committee reviewed the pre-K to 12 capital inventory and improvement study, also known as the pre-K space study created by LPA associates, it was requested that Dr. Sawyer present to the committee a potential process for reviewing the recommendations from that study regarding our pre-K to grade four capital needs across the district, and to make recommendations regarding the future direction for early childhood and elementary-level capital investment. And I know, Dr. Sawyer, you shared some materials with us this evening, so why don't I turn it over, over to you?
Sure. There's a memorandum that we'll post tomorrow on the website that I'll summarize for you or for those watching this evening, in terms of an, an approach that could be fruitful that was initially framed by Ms. Heffernan at a joint workshop with the select board when we were reviewing the, what is commonly known as the pre-K to 12 space study earlier in the, in the early or late winter, early spring. I think that an approach that, that could be helpful, because there are, this report laid out a variety of potential options for the preschool through grade four piece. There are a couple, you know, the, the first priority that the space study indicated should be, and the school committee and the select board have concurred, is the very severe overcrowding in Shrewsbury High School, hence the submission of a statement of interest for potentially a project supported by the Mass School Building Authority around a potential expansion of the high school. Again, that will be years away. We won't know for a year from now whether or not that they are interested in working with us or starting that process. The second priority was really about addressing, you know, the condition and age specifically of Coolidge School, and also, at the same time, what we perceive to be, there will be, will be a need to expand our preschool program beyond our limits at Parker Road Preschool. And, and after that, a third priority is to make sure that we have parity among our K to 4 elementary schools in terms of access and opportunity educationally, in terms of the foot the facilities can provide. And because there are so many different variation, options that are in the report, the sense from the committee, and asked for a process around how we could examine those and think about what a pathway forward might be. Again, any significant large projects would, would be likely beyond any sort of high school project at some point, but, you know, starting to put together a longer-term capital plan in conjunction with our partners in the municipal government around school building needs, looking at what this elementary pathway potentially could be, I think makes a lot of sense to do in, in the coming months and over the course of the next, almost next year. I think that to do that, a model for this kind of work is, is the work we did with the school start times and sleep health initiative, because we want to have a lot of stakeholders at the table, as well as those with expertise around the different issues. I think that, you know, any of these issues and any of these options are going to affect the entire preschool through grade four population in all of our school communities along those grade levels, so I think it's important to have representation from all of them. So, you know, the kind of key questions that this process should answer, again, that were presented by Ms. Heffernan when, when in that joint workshop a few months ago, you know, what is the, the future of preschool? Will we need to increase seats? Will there be, we know that we're starting to see mandates in different states for expanding and, and public schools offering universal preschool, as well as the demand that there is in the community as well, and the benefit it could provide to our district to have a larger program with, with more access. What's the best model around early childhood and elementary education in terms of things like the size of the building? You know, we have smaller neighborhood schools, we have larger neighborhood schools where we made decisions around the redistricting process when Beal opened, about how that would be configured. What does the future of that look like over time in Shrewsbury in the longer term? What are the benefits and the trade-offs when you have a larger school versus a smaller school? Would, would preschool be a standalone program like it is now, or is it something that could be folded into different elementary schools if it were to expand in the future? Certainly, what does equity look like, and that equity across and parity across our K to 4 schools? What does that look like for equitable experiences for students? So, these are all questions that this process should address. I think that, you know, creating a process that, of course, is transparent, and that able to discuss that future direction with various stakeholder representatives is important, and looking at the pros and cons of the different options that have been presented in the space study. And so, aligned with what Ms. Heffernan suggested, you know, I think that an approach where there are representatives from the school committee, probably likely two, that we would invite members of, of the select board to be part of this as well, should, should they have the, the ability and inclination to do so at this point in time, to have a parent representative, like we did for the redistricting committee, from each of the pre-K to 4 schools, Parker Road, Beal, Coolidge Floral, Patton, and Spring Street, and that I would suggest that those be appointed by the chair of the school committee when we, when we do form this, this study group, that there be a faculty and staff representative from each of those schools as well, that I would suggest that I would appoint based on interest. appoint based on interest and application to be part of that process. Certainly, our leadership needs to be part of this. So the director of our preschool and the principal of each of our K to four schools, I would like to see involved. And then, of course, our central office leadership, who have expertise in a variety of things that would apply to this kind of work. We were extremely successful, of course, with the Beal project, with the the team of Ms. Clouter and Ms. Belcito, Mr. Collins, working together along, of course, with Mr. Girardi as the principal at Beal in the development of that. And I think those roles are going to be key to be part of this process as well. On the municipal side, of course, the way we're set up in Shrewsbury is that the Public Buildings Division is part of the municipal government, not part of the school department, would suggest that, you know, members from that DPW and the Public Buildings Division be part of the process to provide their expertise, as well as someone that Mr. Mizikar, the town manager, would appoint, either participate himself, would be welcome to, of course, or a representative to represent the town manager's office, and then myself as the superintendent of schools. It's a fairly large group. But again, I think that we saw with the Sleep Health Advisory Committee that we can use that to our benefit to make sure that we have the variety of voices at the table, and we can process that in a way that that actually can enhance the process rather than get in the way when there when there are a number of voices. But I think that it's, you know, the stakeholder representation really is key. So with that, I would recommend that we follow a similar timeline to the Sleep Health Advisory Committee, where we do some planning work this summer, and form the group, and be able to work throughout the fall and through the winter, probably with the target date I'm suggesting of March to be complete, of having, you know, gone through the study, thought about a pathway forward, make some recommendations to the school committee and the select board about future needs and how we might address those in terms of our capital investment over time, whether that's longer term capital investment, that could be a number of years from now, based on our projections, or shorter term needs that might be part of a year to year capital plan to maintain and make sure that our schools are have the best physical spaces that they can under what the limitations we have as a community. So that is the suggested pathway, and be happy to get any feedback from the committee. And if you concur, we can start to, we would certainly approach the municipal leadership around if it seems to make sense to them and how they might be able to participate with us, because obviously we want this to be as collaborative as possible.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. Any comments or feedback?
I want to first thank you, Ms. Heffernan, because this was your idea at one of our workshops, and it was excellent. As we look toward this, it's a it's a long project, but we're all taxpayers in the community as well. So when we look at capital projects, they are expensive. And I know having as much data driven information when you go before the voters is key. So thank you. That was a great recommendation. I fully support this. I think it's the best way to handle something being data driven and providing the community with the knowledge of what we need and the priorities within that. And it's a long way off, but we should start doing that now. So everybody involved in the community understands, not only that the, because these are, these are town buildings, they're not school buildings. I say that all the time. You know, we shouldn't talk about them as it's a school. It's actually a town building. And making sure that we all understand what's needed, when it might be needed, and potential costs down the road are key to getting any of these projects passed. So thank you to you, Ms. Heffernan, and Dr. Sawyer for putting this together.
I too appreciate the suggestion put forth by Ms. Heffernan. And I also appreciate the approach that we're taking to this. I think we all met during that workshop. We knew that, you know, the high school was one of the key areas of focus because of the space, but we also felt like, okay, if that's the case, we also need to take a look at, you know, the aging, you know, Coolidge School, and how do we look at, you know, the elementary level in general. So I like the engagement that we're going to get from the various stakeholders. I think it makes sense to to have everyone here at the table that's listed. It's certainly going to be a complex process, but I'm looking forward to it getting started.
Excellent.
I also want to thank Ms. Heffernan and Dr. Sawyer. I appreciate that this process is being formalized as we have conversations or have had conversations, and certainly they're very early days, conversations about the need to address space issues at the high school. The question that comes up all the time, what about Coolidge deserves an answer, deserves some focus? And though it's not a quick answer, and then this is not the full answer to the question, I think it is it is important that we crystallize a process or formalize a process by which we are looking at the entire district's space needs and not just the next looming emergency.
I also like the proposed approach. And although it's a large number of individuals, I think it's extremely important to have all the voices at the table. I do think the Sleep Health Advisory Group was a great model for this that worked very well. There was a large number of people on that committee, but we were able to bring a lot of different perspectives to the issue, and it was extremely helpful. And I also like that this group would have the ability to maybe address some of the shorter term needs as well as the longer term needs, because there are some, you know, HVAC and different things of that nature that maybe can be addressed a little bit more in the short term as opposed to the long term. And if we can, you know, start bringing those issues forward in this process as well, I think that would be very helpful.
Yeah. As as has been mentioned, and part of this was a bit of a bit of a brainchild, but I think from where I sit, capital planning begins with an assessment of where we are today. And I'm really thankful for some of the folks in this room who made sure that the space study was part of the Beal construction project, that that was instrumental for us. I look forward to these committee members getting the voluminous report and diving into it, and it numbers in the hundreds of pages with all the appendices. So that that report answered for us sort of a status of our assets, but that doesn't tell us about how our assets impact the educational program. And that is that is a conversation for the community. And so and then we get to prioritizing, and then we get to funding plans. And so I think this is a, this certainly while not near term, is about us doing longer term planning. That's it. That's appropriate, I think, for the roles that we are in at this point in time. So I also want to just note that whatever plan we come up with, too, has to be nimble because priorities change and shift. And so but I think it's an important point in time for us. So somebody told me recently that they think the school committee runs a really good, the school district, excuse me, runs a really good process, and so we can run a good process. So this is what we're doing. We're trying to try to run a good process and hear a lot of voices. So thank you, Dr. Sawyer, for making the time. It's important that we continue to advocate for the needs of the school buildings run by the town department, but but really important for our educational programming. Dr. Sawyer, I think, given the feedback you're getting from the committee tonight, I don't know that this matter requires a vote, but more just an acknowledgement that I think you can feel free to move forward and in any ways that I can be supportive to you in those conversations with our town partners. I'm eager and willing to help.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is in finance and operations, and that is a support, support of funding for the Oak Middle School Window Replacement Project. And I think we are looking for a vote this evening at our May 2022, so a year, nearly a year ago, annual town meeting. Warren Article 18 was approved to fund the Oak Middle School Window Replacement Project. At that time, the total cost of the project was estimated to be $950,000, but subsequent cost estimates haven't completed. It's now estimated to be just shy, unfortunately, of $4 million, three, $3,899,000, including construction design and construction management fees due to the inflation of the construction industry. Shrewsbury was fortunate to get this project approved in 2022 at a 52.26% funded through the Mass School Building Authority in one of their programs. A new warrant article, this time Article 31, is on the 2023 Annual Town Meeting in the month of May to allocate additional funding to complete this project. And I understand Mr. Collins is with us this evening to recommend that we vote to support Article 23 to signal our support as a committee on the on the need for this important project. Mr. Collins, should I turn it over to you for any additional background?
Yeah, that that covers a lot. The thing, the things that I would probably highlight is just in terms of the actual need for window replacement. And when the statement of interest was submitted to the Mass School Building Authority under their accelerated repair program back in May of 2021, that was a very competitive process. That specific program really kind of covers smaller projects. They allocate a certain amount of funding for smaller projects that can extend the life of an existing school building, in that those monies are typically focused on boilers and windows and roofs. And so it, there was a lot of applicants, but we were fortunate to be selected because of the age of the windows at Oak Middle School, which at the time was 41 years old. So now they're 43 years old. There's certainly a need of repair and could, with today's technology, certainly this investment could provide more energy efficient windows as well. I think the other key aspect to this is that because of the inflationary cost in the construction industry, that in 2022, excuse me, 2023, the current year, the MSBA has stopped funding accelerated repair program projects because they just don't have enough funding. They had to take that pot of money, basically, and allocate it over to the so called core program, which is for basically new buildings and addition renovations. So we're fortunate to be selected. We're fortunate to be in the pipeline. I see this as a key opportunity to get the project done. And while it's fortunate, the, you know, original estimate is different than the current one, the cost is the cost. And if the MSBA is going to pay or bear 52% of that cost, then that's financially favorable to the taxpayers of Shrewsbury. As a matter of process, we've, you know, asked the school committee to vote on individual warrant articles before they appear at the annual town meeting, so that town meeting members know what your position is officially. And so that's the purpose of bringing this in front of you this evening. So with that, happy to answer any questions you have. There is a recommended vote language for you there if you'd like to use that.
Can I, Mr. Collins, just a matter of clarification, as it came up last year at annual town meeting, while 52% of the cost is covered, the warrant article actually is for the full amount. Could you just explain what that is? Is it, I know it caused confusion last, a question for the for the community?
That is a regulation of the Mass School Building Authority that basically is a, for whatever project a community is in the pipeline with MSBA, they require those communities to vote the total project cost, because their program is not a guarantee, if you will, first of all. And so secondly, they want to make sure that the community has authorized up to the full amount. And then, secondly, you know, it shows the MSBA about the the strong support of a community to to move forward. So it's really a regulatory piece. And, you know, again, the in round numbers, this being a $4 million project and a 52% reimbursement, you know, the net cost of the town would be at the project end approximately $2 million. But they do require a full authorization of the total project, total estimated project cost upfront.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Really, not even so much about this, but I think this highlights putting a statement of interest in with the MSBA, which we just did, because it shows you the change. I mean, granted, inflation is very high right now, but it shows you the change in waiting a period of time. And we saw that with the first Beal project to them when we did get it into the pipeline. So I think this is just really highlights when we put something in, it's it's timely because it's all, the costs are always going to go up. So I'm glad that we did. And that's a huge jumping cost from where we expected it to be, but it's due to inflation.
Yeah, thank you. See, no other comments?
Shoot, if I could just make one final comment, I just want to make sure that it's clear and that this project would be, as Dr. Sawyer referenced earlier about, and you yourself, Ms. Heffernan, about our public buildings, that this project would be managed by the Department of Public Works, Public Buildings Division. And in fact, it's Keith Baldinger, who has led the charge on this project since the acceptance of the statement of interest from the MSBA. And he's been working closely with the owner's project manager and the architect, and has done all of that work. And so certainly wanted to recognize him for carrying that project through to where it is right now.
No, thank you. That that partnership is key on all of these. So thank you for pointing that out. And I think it, I think it is true, but you can correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Collins. Should the, should town meeting vote on this on this matter in the May Annual Town Meeting for the parents of students at Oak Middle School? They wouldn't expect new but new windows to magically appear quickly. That is in itself a rather lengthy process. And I believe the plan would be summer of '24 would be the hopeful construction time.
Absolutely.
Again, these things take a long time. So if there's no other comments, Dr. Sawyer, if you if you have anything else to add, certainly would welcome it.
No, I think it's, it's, Mr. Collins, financially favorable. It's his way of saying it's a no brainer. If the state's going to pay half the cost, we should continue to support that. It's unfortunate, the inflation factor is causing it to be much more expensive than originally projected. But, you know, it's the opposite side of what Ms. Heffernan mentioned for the for both the Sherwood Middle School Project and the Beal Project. We hit the market at extremely favorable times, and those, you know, schools that were built like a year later were significantly more. And actually, of interest is that there are communities that are facing this situation now for core projects, where they're building a new school, and they did not have enough money authorized to carry out the whole project because the costs increased so much while they were in process. So we're fortunate to, in that sense, that that did not happen with the Beal Project more recently. And to me, it's the cost of doing business. And if the state's going to pay 52 cents on the dollar, let's let's support that. So I certainly recommend that you vote to support it.
Thank you. If I may, then, have a motion to vote to support Article 31 on the 2023 Annual Town Meeting warrant to allocate funding necessary to complete the Oak Middle School Window Replacement Project.
So moved.
Second.
All right. All those in favor can do so with an eye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Wonderful. That passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Collins. And next, as an item of new business, we have the evaluation of the superintendent. And the superintendent's performance evaluation provides feedback on Dr. Sawyer's performance from May 2022 through the present. As the chair during that time, I've written a composite evaluation based on information provided by both by Dr. Sawyer to all of us, but also members, feedback from every school committee member on this important matter. I have to share this evening a summary of that performance evaluation, and that will ultimately get posted to the school's website. Hopefully, we will end this evening with a vote to approve the formal evaluation as well. And I would welcome my colleagues after I share to offer any comments that they may like to have. So for those who are watching and not able to look at this document, with the way our evaluations are structured, there's a student learning goals, student health and well being goals, district strategy goals, project towards the district goals, and then some particular goals tied to recommendations coming from our state partners around instructional leadership, management and operations, community and family engagement, and professional culture. A little lengthy. We're thorough. And so moving moving right along, our student learning goal, and these goals were set and voted on by this committee in the early fall of this school, no, when did we vote on these?
The fall.
In the fall? Okay, in the fall of 2022. And so it's a reflection on those goals and progress to date. Our student learning goal was that by the end of January 2023, the superintendent of schools will have taken steps to seek an understanding of the effects of the pandemic on the collective academic progress and social and emotional well being of Shrewsbury public school students, and will publicly report his findings and recommendation. And towards that goal, the committee finds that the Dr. Sawyer has made significant progress, specifically in collaborating with staff, parents, students, and the community to better understand the effects of the pandemic on student learning and to identify gaps. The district is using data assessments to assist with this process and to identify the areas of highest need and to use our resources as appropriate. Dr. Sawyer's reports are thorough, data driven, and provide a comprehensive view of the progress of the progress towards student performance. And our strategic planning this work this year will also position us well to be able to monitor our progress in the future. Our student health and well being goal is that by the end of January 2023, that the superintendent of schools will present a recommendation for a plan to improve the sleep health of students, which may include changes to school start times for the committee, for the school committee's approval. And we find that you have exceeded our expectations here on this goal. Dr. Sawyer's leadership with the school, sleep, excuse me, sleep health and school start time initiative was outstanding. This work was detailed, thoughtful, and provided a well rounded view of stakeholder impacts across the various start time options presented to the committee for review. The process took a significant amount of work and leadership, and the committee was provided with regular updates and report leading up to our ultimate decision to be implemented next year. District strategy goal was that by the end of February 2023, the superintendent of schools will present an updated five year set of strategic the superintendent of schools will present an updated five-year set of strategic priorities and goals for the school committee's approval. We find that we have, that that goal has been met. This goal has been achieved, and the work product developed represents an improvement in terms of focus and clarity as compared with its predecessor documents. The priorities generated from this process will enable, well, excuse me, better enable the district to focus its attention and resources than previous efforts, which while useful and well-intentioned, were expansive enough to lack sufficient clarity about constrained resources, both fiscal and time, in terms of where they should be spent. Our professional practice goal was that by the end of April two thousand and twenty-three, the superintendent of schools will have developed and implemented updates to both external and internal communication protocols in order to improve the effectiveness of communication with families and staff. And towards this goal, we find there has been some progress made. Communication through a variety of mediums has always been a hallmark of your work, Dr. Sawyer. While we may not have advanced as far as we want in this personal goal area, Dr. Sawyer has continued to communicate with the staff, parents, students, and the community on a frequent basis in a manner that provides a high level of information. Exploring alternative avenues of communication should remain a goal of the superintendents in the coming weeks and months. Our, this, progress towards our district goals. The district's strategic priorities and goals from two thousand and eighteen through two thousand and twenty-two, which we are just really wrapping up, regarding the completion of the remaining goals for two thousand and twenty, excuse me, from two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and twenty-two plan, a key focus of this past year included the potential change of school start time and an upwork, update of the homework policy, and we would find that Dr. Sawyer has exceeded that goal area. Despite the pandemic's impact on all aspects of the profession, many key priorities have been advanced or achieved this year. Dr. Sawyer balanced many key initiatives over the last year, focusing on student health and well-being with a sleep health study, advancing on new resources for counseling and mental health, and leading the district planning for new strategic priorities while ensuring that we were also advancing student learning. Under instructional leadership, our overall rating on instructional leadership is proficient, slightly different standards and categorizations that we use for these goal areas than the ones I just covered. The work to advance classroom practices despite the pandemic is impressive. As we bring more ways to assess performance, we will continue to need to ensure that staff have the tools and resources to minimally use that data to impact their instruction. Determining key metrics as part of the strategic planning process will help district-wide, will help us district-wide focus on key outcomes. There's also been progress in evolving career and technical education options at the high school level in an attempt to mitigate our vocational learning gap. In terms of management and operation, our overall rating is exemplary. The management of the school district as large as Shrewsbury is complex. Dr. Sawyer leads with a firm understanding of our school's financial guardrails while balancing the operational needs of our district in a collaborative fashion. This was displayed in the key investment made in counseling, clinical, and social work, new positions that had a positive impact during the school year. Dr. Sawyer should leverage the predictability of our new budget approach and continue to focus on future investments that will bridge resource gaps. The school committee remains concerned about the lack of diverse representation on the district staff. However, we are appreciative of the concrete steps that have been taken to address this shortcoming. The superintendent's responses to a variety of challenges and crises have instilled confidence in our schools throughout the community. Standard three is in community and family engagement. And in that goal area, we also find the outcomes to be exemplary. Family and community engagement is one of the hallmarks of Dr. Sawyer's management style. Through multiple structured processes this year, Dr. Sawyer engaged many members of the school community, community to build consensus on important issues, including start time and strategic planning. He was thoughtful on topics important to the community, including the school calendar and its impact on families and students. The district has demonstrated its interest in and commitment to public feedback through a variety of channels on a number of key subjects. We appreciate the amount of time that Dr. Sawyer spent recently visiting our schools and talking to students as well to hear feedback directly from, from them. And lastly, in professional culture, in this, in this rating, our overall rating is exemplary. The professional culture of Shrewsbury Public Schools is one of respect and inclusion. Academic success for all students means all. This starts from the top down and is ingrained in the work of all staff. Shrewsbury Public Schools enjoys a statewide reputation for having a strong professional culture, and the superintendent's leadership sets the tone for which, which leads to that recognition. In addition, Dr. Sawyer participated in the Time Intensive Professional Development Program by the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents, their Racial Equity Diversity and Inclusion Ready Program, which demonstrates a commitment to focus on instructional leadership work during this past year in an area critical to advancing the culture for both our staff and our students. As an overall summary of rating for the superintendent's performance, given the preponderance of all of these, we rate the superintendent's performance as exemplary. Shrewsbury is a strong system, which delivers value to everyone in our community. That starts at the top with Dr. Sawyer's leadership and engagement with our students, our parents, our staff, and key members of town government and our residents. While there are always areas for continued growth in the district, such as streamlining communication and balancing the many professional development needs in the district, and building out of staff, which reflects the community's diversity, in each of these areas, Dr. Sawyer has a plan and a path forward to help us get where we want to go. His vision and his leadership are an asset to the town. With that, I will take a breath, and I will allow any of my colleagues who might like to offer any, any comments. Did I say enough?
You know, I, I've worked with Dr. Sawyer for a long time, and we're really extremely fortunate to have him in a leadership role here. You see things in the news, and we've never had anything. I mean, it's always been a strong district with a very thoughtful leader, and he always points out, well, it's a team effort, but it, it starts from the top, and I think you make the staff, students better because they want to emulate you and the things that you do in that leadership. We've navigated the pandemic, I think, better than a lot of districts, and it was due to your leadership and a ton of time and effort. And sure, we have things to do, there's residual effects from the pandemic, but I do really believe we've come out in a much better place in a lot of areas. And you're collaborative, you're thoughtful, and you always strongly advocate for the district regardless of the issue. And we, these are all our public-facing meetings, but the school committee sits in on a lot of other types of meetings, and there's a lot of issues and things that you always advocate for the best of all students. I'm glad that you're able this year to start focusing maybe more back on the duties of a superintendent, because you were pulled away from a lot of that, and we need you to be doing that leadership role. Again, I feel extremely fortunate to have worked with you for so many years. Our school district is in a much better place because you're here, and you do that for staff, students, parents, and the greater community. So you're, it's a well-deserved rating, and we are, again, extremely fortunate to have you.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is the fifth, fifth performance appraisal I've been a part of. In the last three weeks, the first four were private, so it's a little getting used to, but. So I will say, I mean, Dr. Sawyer's tenure with our district has provided stability during very uncertain times, especially over the last three years. And I, I always find his communication and engagement with the community just outstanding, and he's very thoughtful and thorough in his messaging. I also think his crisis management skills are very careful, they're measured, and they're proactive. And as a school committee member, as, as you all know, we're exposed to the rigors of this role unlike most people. There are a lot of things that the public won't hear about, shouldn't hear about, but we hear about it. And it's just, it's just mind-boggling, boggling to me that, you know, we, we are as fortunate as we are to have Dr. Sawyer as our, our superintendent in town. You know, I, I continue to encourage him to think kind of future-forward in terms of, you know, investments that we can make. I, I, for years, you know, prior to the two thousand and twenty-one override, we constantly trimming around the edges. And, and I think, you know, what we saw in the presentation from our director of mental health and social worker shows you the types of return on investment that can be made in, in key investments in the district. Now that we have more predictability, you know, I think we can kind of look ahead to where there are other, you know, resource gaps. But I think it was noted too earlier that we're now on superintendent number three since the seventies, if that's correct, which is just, it's just not normal, you know, when you, and I, and I say that in, in the most complimentary way, because if you look in the news, as Ms. Fritz said, and you look around us, even just within Massachusetts, I mean, you know, it, it, it just doesn't happen that way. It's, and, and it just be, it continues to become an asset for us every year that Dr. Sawyer serves in this town. And it's not just the fact that he's a district leader, he's also a parent and a resident in this town. He's deeply invested in the success of Shrewsbury, and I'm very grateful for his service.
Thank you.
Shrewsbury Public Schools is extremely fortunate to have Dr. Sawyer here. I want to personally thank him for everything that he does, and we're very grateful to the, for the tone that he sets for the district especially. It's one of educational excellence, but it's also one that focuses on the well-being of all students and all the staff, and a sense of belonging for all. I had a deep appreciation for what he did as a parent, but this year, sitting in this seat now, I have an even, even greater appreciation for all that he does on a day-to-day basis, for his leadership skills, and for the, everything that he navigates. It's just, it's, it's really been incredible to watch from a, a front row seat this year. I just want to thank you for all that you do for us.
Thank you.
As I said earlier, tone is set at the top. Superintendent sets a tone of high achievement, high performance that all of our staff throughout the district strive to emulate. That doesn't happen by accident, that doesn't happen with middling leadership. That happens because the person at the top is dedicated, committed, and has decided to try to inspire the people who work for the district to, to succeed, and that certainly is what happens here. I also want to note, you know, that we're in a moment right now as a society where people have lost trust and faith in a lot of institutions, and I have seen that members of this community have a high degree of faith and a high degree of trust in Shrewsbury Public Schools, and a lot of that comes from the manner, the open, accessible, and transparent manner in which the superintendent conducts himself. People feel that they can be heard, you know, people are not always happy with every decision that's made, but people feel like they can be heard, they have the opportunity to be heard. Decisions are explained to them, communication is thorough, communication is regular, communication is clear. That was true throughout the course of the pandemic, and just the, the, the faith that this community has in Shrewsbury Public Schools comes in large part from the superintendent.
Thank you. My comments, and having created one of these, and I've not done that before, so interesting to get to see the comments from everybody. Certainly, Dr. Sawyer, I would only add that we're probably one of the largest employers in town, if not the largest. We're running, you're running an incredibly complex organization, which takes a lot of juggling, takes a lot of strategy, and takes a lot of grace. It has been really an honor and a privilege to chair this committee this year, largely because of the clear and open communication and relationship with you. So, and in many ways, this feels like the year where we, we, we got back to a lot of business, which has been great. We've addressed a lot of key issues, and I continue to be incredibly proud of the district that you, that you lead, and thank you for all of your efforts on, on, on behalf of all, all of the kids and all of the staff in, in the district. I can turn it over to you, if you'd like, or we could take a vote.
Well, I just, yeah, certainly thank you. It's very humbling, and I'm appreciative of, of the commentary, and I will say, it is a team effort, and, and certainly the support I've received from you as committee members collectively and also individually in terms of your interest and your support for the work we do, and your willingness to listen to what is coming from, you know, through me, from our staff and constituents and students, our needs, and always being supportive of, of trying to help us do better. We're, we're very fortunate to have very supportive families here, the best students around, and certainly I, I continue to just be so impressed by what our staff does every day in, in the service of our students, their hard work, their skill, their enthusiasm is really just something that is remarkable, I think, and that is the, the key reason, as Mr. Pallett referenced in his remarks earlier, of why our schools are as good as they're, they are. I, I want to particularly thank the leadership team, the central office leadership team, some of whom are here this evening, just do extraordinary work and, and work that is, you know, very much the iceberg, what people see and what's actually there underneath. There's a lot, a lot of work and effort and thoughtfulness that goes into their work, and that, that's not seen by a lot of folks, but I get to see it, and, and they do tremendous work on behalf of making this a better district. The principals, who I work with closely, the rest of the district leadership team. I appreciate our partners and our different employee associations that we work with closely, our, our teachers' union, our power professionals' union. And, and again, not all, we don't always agree, but there's always an open dialogue and, and an opportunity to, to work together to see if we can collaborate on making things better, and that's something that, you also see in newspapers, other places, that aren't always necessarily go well, and I think it's because of that willingness to collaborate that we have a strong partnership here. I certainly also want to recognize Beth McCollum, the executive assistant with whom I work, who does a tremendous amount to support me every day and, and keep me on track and, and communicate effectively and make sure that I'm able to prioritize whatever the most urgent needs might be at the time. And I apologize for anyone that I'm leaving out, but again, I'm very grateful to be in this position in Shrewsbury, in a wonderful school district, in a wonderful community. And I just finally, I just thank the, the support of my family. I certainly could not do the work without their support and understanding. And, you know, it is a challenging landscape right now in society and certainly in education, and there's a lot that is coming to and at our schools across our nation, and although we're not dealing with some of the way, that in some of the ways, maybe some other places, we're not immune from it either, and I, I think that we're going to continue to see some challenging times ahead. But I think because of the quality of the team we have and the leadership on the school committee and the support of our community, we, we will continue to endeavor to do really good work for, for kids, and that's ultimately what it's all about. So I thank you, and again, I share any of the accolades with all the people who support me every day and, and work with me, and again, I'm very fortunate and, and grateful. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. With that, if I may, have a motion that the committee vote to approve the formal evaluation document created by the chair and distributed under separate cover earlier today.
So moved.
Second. Thank you. All those in favor can do so with an aye, please?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Dr. Sawyer.
Thank you. And I would be remiss in not mentioning that I should have mentioned it at the beginning, that this is National Administrative Professionals Day.
Yes.
And, and in addition to Ms. McCollum, certainly all of the support professionals in the central office and our secretaries in the buildings, who, everything goes through them and around them, we, we would grind to a halt if they weren't doing their work every day, and, and that they, they deserve everyone's thanks in the community, so kudos to them as well.
You surely do, thank you. Our, our next item is the approval of minutes. Minutes from the school committee workshop held on April fifth, two thousand and twenty-three, and the school committee meeting held on April twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three were provided under separate cover. Do folks have a chance to review those? Any comments or corrections? Those can then be marked as approved. We do not have an executive session this evening, so at this point, Mr. Pallett, I would love to accept a motion for an adjournment.
So moved.
Second. Excellent. We wish you much luck, Jason. Yes, I know we have to vote on it. All those in favor? He's always been whispering. Aye. All those opposed? We thank you very much, and good night.